This is Mike Silvia, here with New Bedford Guide. We're here at the anticipated New Bedford Ward Two City Council debate. We're here with three candidates here, and we're gonna go over, have a map. I have a map here that is gonna show you kinda what Ward Two is, in case you're unfamiliar with that. So, Ward Two has Riverside and Brookline Parks, so two of the bigger parks in the city. One's right on the Cushionet River, one's towards the north end. North Front Street, probably one of the more significant streets in New Bedford, as far as crime that we've covered out there. Belleville from Cogswell down to Harwich, Cushionet Avenue down to Harwich Street, Ashley Boulevard to Sawyer, I mean, excuse me, from Sawyer down to Park Avenue. And of course, the New Bedford Portuguese is in Ward Two. So those are the big characteristics of the ward. The map is up on the screen. So what we have here is three candidates, welcome candidates. First candidate, Maria Giesta, former Chief of Staff for Barney Franks, Congressman Franks. We have Edwin Cardagina, founder of United New Bedford. And we have Carlos Pramental Felix, the founder of New Bedford Alive. Okay, so we're gonna go over the rules of this debate. So each person's gonna be given a three-minute introduction to tell why they should be elected to Ward Two. The other rule is if any of the candidates mention the other candidate, the candidate mentioned actually gets a one-minute rebuttal to counter it. And we're gonna rotate, we drew numbers early on, so Maria Giesta, she has the first intro, and you have three minutes.
Great, well, thank you very much to New Bedford Guide for putting this debate on. As you know, my name is Maria Giesta, and I am running to be your Ward Two counselor. I decided to run because I believe I have the experience and the knowledge and ideas that Ward Two needs right now. I grew up in Ward Two, my family and I still live there. I know Ward Two very well, not only the people, but the neighborhoods. I was lucky enough to grow up in a great city with great people. And my family and I, you know, took advantage of what the city had to offer us. I went to school here, I went to Ashley Elementary, I went to Nomandon, New Bedford High, and then SMU, which is now UMass Dartmouth. My parents instilled in us a fundamental idea of public service. And my brothers and I, my sister, have in one way or the other tried to give back to our community. My parents also were able to own a restaurant, Cafe Giesta, which was on North Front Street. So I know what has been going on in that area. New Bedford means a lot to me, especially Ward Two. So I am here not only to be the voice for the residents, but to learn from what they need and what they want. It's not just about me. I am here to work for the people of Ward Two. I will always be accessible to you, I will always listen to you. I don't have all the answers, but what I will do is work very hard for you. And I just hope that on October 3rd, that you vote for me. Thank you very much.
Okay, so Carlos, you're up next.
Hi, my name is Carlos Felix, I'm running for Ward Two. I was born and raised in New Bedford, I love New Bedford. I believe I have what it takes to make a difference as a city councilor. I see firsthand the problems and the challenges that Ward Two residents face on a daily basis. I believe having this knowledge makes me the best candidate for the job. I have been fighting for New Bedford for over a decade now. Working with the city and city council whenever possible. Always advocating for more police to be present in the neighborhoods. For brighter lighting, for better communication between the city administration and the community. And of course, cleaner and safer streets, cleaner and safer parks. People should feel safe to walk down their own street and to play in neighborhoods, parks, and playgrounds without fear. Crime is high in Ward Two, and I will not pretend otherwise. We must make tackling the gang, drug, and opioid epidemic a priority. We must make sure that those that want help get the help that they need. But one thing I will not do is coddle or enable the people responsible for the chaos that is destroying our neighborhoods and its people. It has spilled beyond the so-called bad areas into areas that in the past were immune to these nightmares. Taxes in New Bedford is high. We need to attract new businesses and spur economic growth, invest in education, and work towards making the city safer and cleaner and more business-friendly. This is how we attract potential businesses and families to move into New Bedford. Creating a friendly, business-friendly environment for economic growth. I don't have all the solutions. What I do have is the willingness to listen and learn. I will be available and accessible as your city councilor. Together, we can make this happen. Please, vote for Carlos Pramental Felix, thank you.
Hello, and thanking the Bedford Guide for having us and doing this and offering this opportunity to everybody in New Bedford and for those watching. I just wanna let you know that my name is Edwin Cardagina. I believe that I am the most qualified candidate for Ward Two. I grew up in the area. I know firsthand what it's like to be on these streets day in and day out. I've struggled personally, I know what it's like to be homeless, I know what it's like to be addicted. I know what it's like to survive, to do anything and everything that it takes to survive. So I'm here at the ground level with the people of New Bedford. I've bounced around due to my family situation, so I've been around many of the neighborhoods, specifically in Ward Two. I am married, I have three children, I graduated from New Bedford High, and I am currently attending BCC here in New Bedford. I am looking forward to bringing my experience as a public servant, which I've been doing long before this campaign. I will continue to do that long after this election is over. And I hope that you will select me on October 3rd to be a Ward Two representative, so that way I can continue from within the city council chambers to serve the community in a different capacity. So, thank you.
Okay, so that was the intro round, now we'll do the question round. I have some pre-written questions that I've come up with. And if you have questions on Facebook, throw them out there, if they're good questions, I'll ask. So, question one, Carlos, you're up first, you got two minutes. So, what is the single biggest issue facing Ward Two?
The single biggest issue facing Ward Two, I believe, is the crime problem in the ward. How long do we have?
Two minutes.
Excuse me, two minutes. The crime issue in New Bedford. As of late, we hear a lot about the crime statistics, and some politicians like to point to them to try and make a point that crime is down. But in Ward Two, crime isn't down. And we need to make sure that we advocate for the police to be in the neighborhoods, to be part of the community groups, and to make sure that they stay in touch with their city councilors, with their elected officials. Because there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes that people don't realize. A lot of information that circles around that the normal everyday resident isn't pervy to. And we need to make sure and hold the police accountable in this relationship. They have a responsibility, the city council has a responsibility. And that responsibility, for me, is to ensure the safety of the citizens in New Bedford. We need more police walking the beat. We need more police in general. I believe that New Bedford is shy of 28 police officers of a full force at this time. And I'm curious as to how much money that New Bedford has spent and has not spent in regards to the police.
Okay, Edwin, you're next.
I believe the, at the core of Ward Two, the biggest issue for me and the people that have shared with me is the opioid epidemic. And I feel that getting to the root of the cause of all the crime and everything that's going on is just establishing a connection with these folks that need help. They find themselves in survival mode, they're struggling with their addictions, and they just need help. We need to be, I look forward to continuing to be that individual that is not just gonna be hiding behind four walls, that is gonna be on the street and connecting directly with these people in collaboration with the New Bedford Police Department and any other service providers in the area. I'm very knowledgeable in that, and I think that that experience that I've definitely developed over the years as a volunteer is gonna be crucial to fixing this issue, or at least working towards a better Ward Two.
Okay, Maria.
Thank you. I do believe that crime is the biggest issue, but also the opioid crisis is involved in that, is mixed in within that. Ward Two unfortunately has been seeing over the last few years a crisis of shootings and stabbings and prostitution and drug dealing. And we need, as I've stated before, public safety is probably the number-one thing that I believe in order to combat these issues is the main thing that we need. We need more police officers doing the walk and talk program. I think people feel safe when they see their police officers out in the street. I also believe that better and brighter lighting, again, just tonight driving over here, seeing how dark our streets are, I think, again, criminals are not gonna commit crimes when there's a bright light on them, or even cameras. So, for me, what I wanna work on with the police department and the mayor and the other city councilors is to see how we can combat the issue of crime in our city, because it is a big issue in Ward Two. And the people every day approach me about what can we do to make it better.
Okay, so next we're gonna go to Edwin. We actually have D'Souza Ajali ask, and just give me a yes or no answer for this one. So, we have two charter schools in the ward, do you support charter schools or public schools? So not yes or no, but which, do you support charter schools, yes or no?
Either or.
Yeah, yes or no?
Yes.
That's a very, yes or no is not the only answer. I believe that a parent should be allowed to send their child to a charter school if that's what they want. But for myself, public schools.
So give me more than a yes or no then.
The reason why I say, I ask, because I feel that charter schools cater to a different population that may not fit well within the public schools, meaning smaller classroom sizes, they may have special needs that need to be handled a little bit better. Not saying that the public schools can't, but they just have a larger population that they're handling. And I've seen firsthand how these kids can actually excel in a smaller classroom setting, which is provided at the charter school. I'm not against public schools at all, I just think that there's certain situations that call for charter school.
Carlos?
I would say I support charter schools as long as it doesn't take away from the public schools. What I would like to see is for public schools to incorporate some of the things and the way charter schools go about teaching and the way they do things. I would like to see that.
Okay, so we'll go now to Maria. So, are you satisfied with Riverside and Brookline Parks, how they are now?
Well, there's always room for improvement. I live right near Brookline Park, and they, there is littering there. I wish that people were a little more conscious of when they throw their garbage, walking along the sidewalks. It's a beautiful park, again, I grew up there, so I've seen a tremendous change, for the better, in Brookline Park. Riverside, when my family first came here in 1966, we lived on Phillips Avenue. So Riverside Park didn't exist, it was factories over there. There was a famous handbag factory. So, I, it's a beautiful park there, and I'm really glad to see that the neighborhood is taking advantage of it, and, you know, I am a huge proponent of having as many beautiful parks as we can in this city. It brings families together and neighborhoods together. So yeah, I mean, there's room for improvement, but overall, both Brookline and Riverside are great parks.
Carlos?
Riverside Park, you just struck a nerve with me right here. I've been advocating for the city to correct some major safety concerns there with the park. Actually, I got some stuff done after speaking with a few department heads. This is a good example of how I'm already taking on some of the responsibilities of a city council, even though I'm not elected yet. The mulch was missing within a section of the playground. Water was filling up the inside of the playground section. There was some hazardous poles sticking up, and I had issue with that. At first, they didn't see exactly what I was talking about, but after a few phone calls and persuading them, they were on the same page. I invited people down to the park from the city, and we had a conversation. I pointed things out, and they came to an agreement that they needed to do something. So now the mulch is filled, they're promising me that the slides are ordered, and they're gonna be placed in shortly. I would like to see some tape put around some of that playground area, because it's still a little bit of a hazard. But at least the city is attempting to fix the problems there. Beautiful park, needs more attention. It has a lot more potential for greater use, and I would like to see that. It's gonna take some investment, and it's gonna take somebody to make sure they tell the mayor, "Hey, Ward Two, don't forget about us."
Edwin?
As a former DPI employee, I think that the city has been trying to do the best they can with what they have. We know that we have a problem with budgets, we know that the DPI employees are being stretched beyond their capability. We need to have some compassion towards our city workers, they don't get paid enough. And it's clearly an issue when they're being called in order to do every single little thing, not knowing that they have their own outline for the day that they have to attend to. So I think that as a city councilor, we need to have a good working relationship with them and understand what they're responsible for at that level to be able to appreciate what they do, when they do it. But going back to the question, I think the parks are very beautiful. Like Carlos did mention, there were some issues at Riverside Park, but I wouldn't blame it on anybody. I would say that there is a need for more staffing in the city of New Bedford. And another thing is to, you know, we don't just sit here and watch people litter. We actually empower the kids that are at the basketball court to pick up after themselves, go and play basketball with them, get acquainted with the locals. You know, have a relationship with your neighbors, and just empower them to pick up after themselves and clean up our basketball courts, it's our park. Let's do our part and clean up after ourselves.
Okay, so next question, Carlos. So politicians are great at giving general statements, but not a lot of specifics sometimes. So, two ways to reduce crime in Ward Two?
Two ways to reduce crime in Ward Two? This is an excellent question. I mean, when you have citizens contacting the police and going through their community groups, which, I can't speak for my opponent, but I've been loyally going to community groups, and I stay in touch with Jerry Pinto, Mr. Kenny Rosendies, John Lobo, and other people from the community groups. And I think the city can do a better job with taking care of the situations that these people are bringing up. We're talking about people that have been dedicated to this city for years. They're bringing up situations, I mean, it's every two years, it's like clockwork in New Bedford in this political game. Every two years, these wannabe opponents come out of the woodworks, and they have all these ideas, okay, and they wanna address the concerns. But unfortunately, all these concerns that need to be addressed need to be addressed throughout the year. Not just magically when someone drops out of a race, and now all of a sudden, they think they have all these ideas. Well, and this goes for the mayor as well, when he shows up to these community meetings every two years and asks for concerns. And every two years, he comes back around, the same people are there, and the same concerns are there. That right there is a major issue, that's number one. The second one is getting the chief to instill in the police to get out of their vehicles. When there are people in parks after dusk, they should be stopping, speaking with them, having them removed. When there are people sleeping in doorways, in, on a Cushionet Ave, in businesses, defecating and urinating in public, the police need to take note. Not just drive by and log it in as an away.
Okay, so you were both addressed in this, so you each get three minutes. So you first.
Okay, I just, I honestly think that, you know, it's one thing to say something, the other to do. And clearly, he's against, you know, people talking about things, and I think it's a great point. Thank you for bringing it up. I have been active, I believe, more than everybody at this table. And I'm not saying it as a prideful statement, I'm just sharing facts. I have, instead of criticizing and showing up to community groups, I actually created my own, and I mobilized a bunch of people, if not thousands, to actually do things that they complain about, or he's complained about in this case. Instead of just pointing the finger at people, we need to just step up. And as a councilor, I believe that's our job. It's not to criticize anybody else, but what am I not doing? Look at myself, and that's what I think I bring to the table, is that I'm a doer, and I'm gonna get it done.
Okay, Maria, you got three minutes.
Well, I truly believe that one of the ways to always combat crime, not only putting more police officers out on the street, but it's also a community thing. You know, people in their neighborhoods have to be more involved in what's going on and care about their neighbors. So, you know, I'm here because I truly believe I can help the residents of Ward Two. I am not going to get into a debate of who's done what and who's better than whom. I know what I can do, I've been in public service my whole life. I've lived in New Bedford, and I grew up in New Bedford. So, I think we all, there's no question that we all care about our city. So, the question is, is what do we do? And that is working with the police. I have said many times that I really believe that better lighting, especially in high-crime areas, not only better lighting, but brighter lighting in high-crime areas really help. And lastly, I think cameras. I really do believe we need cameras in high-crime areas. And I know that most people, that's what they wanna see too. People need to get involved in their community, I know it's tough. But there are many different ways to be involved in your community. You don't have to be in somebody's face, you don't have to go around telling everybody what a great job you're doing. I like working behind the scenes, I like working with the people, and that's what I will continue to do. So, again, better lighting, cameras, and more police officers.
So just go over the rules again since this question. So if anyone's addressed or generality is your address, you get a minute rebuttal. Each twenty had two minutes, but I gave you each three as the total response time. So, next question, so now we start with.
I just thought that that was a response to his kinda jab.
Yeah, you get a minute to respond, then you get two minutes to respond to the question.
Oh, I didn't know it was consecutive, because I didn't even get to answer the question.
Okay, so that's the rules for here. Okay, so here's a, we're going now, starting with Edwin, since we started with Carlos on the last question. Okay, so how do you handle the slum lords or absentee landlords in Ward Two?
I think we need to give some teeth to that problem property ordinance. I don't think that the definitions are correct in that regardless of what happens, you need about eight times to qualify a property as a problem property. I think that if you're raided or anything that's of serious nature, it should automatically qualify you as a problem property, and they should be dealt with.
Sure.
Well, it is a major issue in New Bedford, and I've seen it change over the years. You know, before, a lot of these tenement homes were owned by families. And, you know, mom and dad lived on the first floor, Vavou lived on the first floor, and the whole family lived on the second and third. It's changed, the dynamic has changed now. And one thing I'd like to see is more renter-to-ownership of these homes. And I know that there are a few programs out there that I'd like to work on and see what we can do. I will admit that there is a problem with the ordinances that have been passed. We need to make them tougher. When somebody comes in front of you, in front of the housing court, four, five, six, seven times, if a house is being raided over and over again by the police, something needs to be done. I am very aware of the rights of residents, of the renters in these places. And I don't wanna take away those rights, because I just don't want owners to come in and throw them out. But something needs to be done with the laws regarding these homes. And we need to do that at the city level, and I believe we also need to do that at the state level. And that is something that I wanna work very closely with the mayor, the city council, and also our state reps and senators.
Carlos?
Well, this is something I've been talking about, once again, for years. It seems as though Edwin's taking stuff out of my playbook from, I don't know, six years ago when it comes to removing the teeth and all that. Edwin likes to think that he's the only person that started a community group in the city. He thinks he's the only guy that does good in the city. He doesn't realize that I've been at this for a long time. I started my own community group back in the day called Citizens in Action for Progress. Helped hundreds of people with food, with housing, with addiction, with getting them off the streets, for whatever reason. You know, he's talking about in-your-face. This is the same guy that after Maria Giesta accused him of having a fraudulent nonprofit, went on an hour rant on Facebook. He accused of the bigger nonprofits of funneling money. He accused politicians in New Bedford of being crooked and dirty. This is your opportunity, Edwin, why don't you share with us those politicians that are dirty and that nonprofit that's funneling money? Do us a favor.
Give Maria her fifty bucks back.
Okay, so are you done?
Case in point.
Are you done with your point?
I'm done.
Okay, so you get a minute rebuttal.
So, you're hearing this from a guy who just shook my hand, talking a bunch of stuff behind the scenes about Maria Giesta, claiming that he had nothing to do with, and it was all her, and clearly, he's the one behind all of this on top of her campaign team. It's all false, sooner or later, people are gonna see, you can look up all the information on there. And, you know, when somebody's got the truth, you don't have to really defend it. You know, I am who I am, I do what I do, I serve the community. I don't need a plod, I don't need a pat on the back, and people who know me know that.
Can I respond to that, since he accused me of fifty dollars?
Now you get, so how do we take care of the slum lords and absentee?
I thought I did.
Oh, you did it, all right. All right, so, go ahead, Carlos, you got one minute.
I mean, how dare this guy? How dare this guy on live, it's not even intelligent, live debate here, tell the good people of the city? When the people of the city know what I'm about and what I've been doing for this city for the past couple of years, okay? How dare you even insinuate that I took any kind of money from my opponent? That's absurd, and you really need to stop hiding behind religion? Because every time you make a mistake, you think you can do an Ah Father, and everything goes away. That's not how it works, Edwin, in the real world. That's not how it works. The real Edwin will be exposed. We seen a little bit of that the other day during that one-hour rant, didn't we? When you called people clowns, you told, you said that people were full of crap.
Okay, one minute, so.
You still have it named.
Do I respond?
One minute's up. Let's move on to another.
You still have it named, the the nonprofits you said were funneling money and the dirty politicians.
One minute's up. So let's move on.
Name them.
Okay. We could sit here all day, and Maria will never get a chance to talk, so.
Since my name was brought up.
Yep, go ahead.
Uh, I have a minute, right? First of all, let's stop with this, okay? First of all, I speak for myself. There's nobody on my team that speaks for me, okay? Uh, when, and that's all I'm gonna say. We're a bunch of adults here. Let's talk about the issues. People in Ward Two wanna hear what we're planning or hoping to do. So let's move on, okay? Thank you very much.
Okay, so let's bring it back. So you're starting with you, Maria.
Thank you.
So let's go to the next question. And we've had someone ask this, and I had this prepared. So what have you done in Ward Two to already make it a better place to live in before becoming a politician? It's like right now, what have you done before you're gonna get elected to Ward Two, any one of you? So what have you done so far in Ward Two?
Well, I've, I belong to the, uh, New Bedford Boys, the Greater New Bedford Boys and Girls Club. I'm on their Board of Directors. And I'm also on the Day of Portugal Committee. And, uh, I participate as much as I can. I, uh, talk with my neighbors. I, you know, I I think we have this fantasy that you have to uh, belong to a certain organization to be able to do what you need to do in the community. I worked, I am retired. I worked for almost thirty years to help people in this, uh, city and in this ward. Uh, unfortunately, my mom, and I know that everybody has a parent, and I know that everybody has uh, a father and a mother, grandparents. But she's my mother. And in twenty fifteen, she had a stroke. And because I am the child that is retired and had the ability to take care of my mother, that is my main focus and was my main focus for the last two years. I think people need to remember that not only did my mother have a stroke, but she came down with a septic infection and she almost died. So my first priority for the last two years has been my mom. And I am lucky enough that I was able to get on to the Board of the Boys and Girls Club and also the Day of Portugal. And I do attend as many meetings that I can throughout the city. So again, I am as involved as I can possibly be, and I will be involved, um, when I become the Ward Two Counselor. Um, so that's, that's my main, um, issue at this point.
Carlos.
Can you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
So before you even become a politician, if you get elected, what have you done before now to make Ward Two a better place?
I'm sorry to hear about your mom. I didn't know the whole extent of that.
That's okay. It's all right. It's, I'm not here to, uh, garner pity.
I understand that. Um, okay. I don't usually like to do this. This is tough for me to 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 talk about things that I've done. It doesn't come easy for me. But, uh, some of the things that come off the top of my head would be, I don't know, I've helped police, um, bring dozens of people to justice through, uh, some of my, uh, work with New Bedford Guide and through New Bedford Live. That's an aspect of it that people don't know. I've worked with the police on several cases. I've had to testify in court. I actually helped, uh, oh, please forgive me, the girl that passed away on July third, uh, I helped bring, uh, that gentleman, uh, to justice with some of the evidence I brought forward. That's just one of the simple things, uh, that I can talk about right now. But advocating for, uh, the citizens in New Bedford, like, for instance, Seven-Eleven, the issue over there. We, uh, spoke with, uh, the corporate office. We informed them what was going on, showed them video, showed them evidence. Um, we explained to them that what was going on is having an impact negatively on in the neighborhood. So we came to a conclusion, an agreement, that they're gonna shut down at at midnight and open up at five o'clock. Um, since then, police are removing the people hanging around, uh, the corner there and on the property. And believe it or not, it's been, uh, really quiet. And it's only a short period of time, so I can mention a few things, but that was just been a couple of things.
Edwin.
Thank you. Um, I just, uh, at the core, I just stopped complaining. I stopped complaining about the problems. And, uh, definitely don't sit around here and act like I'm doing something. Um, and I've actually created a legitimate nonprofit, Five-O-One-C-three, that has been not only serving people, but recruiting people from, uh, the toughest neighborhoods in the city for the past, what, four years? Um, and empowering them to serve their neighbors. So that way, there's a long-lasting impact, long after we've left and moved on to a different neighborhood, to spread, uh, the blessings that we have for them. Um, on top of that, I've been, um, grateful for the opportunity to intervene in several, uh, citizens' lives, uh, struggling with a suicide ideology under the Greater New Bedford Suicide Prevention Coalition. I've worked as a chaplain and a recovery coach, uh, which is still going on right now with the New Bedford, uh, Police Department, um, and the Greater New Bedford Opioid Task Force. Um, I mean, I'm I'm always involved in something that has to do with the community, Ward Two and beyond. I'm not just focused on, uh, one area. I've been, for the most part, you can span the whole city from North Front Street to Root Street to Montis Park, uh, which, you know, they they just, wherever the the need is, we have gone. And we haven't complained about the issue, haven't, you know, documented the issue and done nothing about it. We clearly just went, made ourselves available, and served people in any capacity that they need, connect them to services, help folks get into treatment when they need it, and just give people the hope that they need to move on.
Okay, Carlos, you're next. There was a time when you could walk a cushioned avenue at night, North Front Street, Ashley Boulevard. Are we ever gonna be able to do that again?
Well, I still do. Um, I still walk, uh, the avenue. To this day, I love walking the avenue. I talk with people there. I have no issue walking down the avenue at all. Uh, but I I can understand the concern because of some of the things going on there. Uh, s- uh, some of the pocket parks that were created uh, have actually, unfortunately, uh, caused a problem instead of being a solution to some of the issues there. Uh, it's kinda given them, um, the ability to hang around. And when I say they, I'm talking about certain people that are there to, you know, cause issue and there's been a, uh, obviously, we know there's an opiate problem and needles found at these parks and drug dealing, prostitution. Uh, it's no secret. So, yeah, that's it.
Okay, Edwin.
Can you repeat the question?
So we used to be able to walk, well, I'll sound kinda out a little too. We used to be able to walk a cushioned avenue and not have to be afraid of walking it at one in the morning, two in the morning? Have we ever get back to that place?
Yeah, I, there's always hope, of course. Um, obviously, I think at the root of the the issues with crime and public safety is obviously the biggest problem we have is the opioid epidemic. There's, there's no denying it. And I think that if we establish a direct connection with people instead of trying to throw services or throw money at them, um, and actually find out what they need instead of trying to force-feed them what they, what we think they need, uh, we're gonna start working towards, uh, getting people, so the focus is on individuals. If we get to the individual, connect with them on that relational level, and get them to where they know they need to be, they just need the help to get there and have that compassion, that love, they're gonna be a productive citizen again. And then that's gonna change their life, that's gonna change their kids' lives, their family, that neighborhood, and then eventually, the city will turn around.
Maria.
Well, there's always hope that, uh, your city is going to, and especially the streets and your ward are gonna be safer. You know, let's not just focus that they're unsafe streets just in Ward Two. Most cities have seen a change in, um, behavior and also in crime. And, you know, I grew up with, uh, uh, people hanging out right in front of Brooklawn Park, you know, the the bricks along the library, and people would just hang out there and, you know, ride their cars up and down Kushner Avenue. That was our big thing. I don't think we were necessarily walking on a Kushner Avenue. We were driving our cars up and down a Kushner Avenue. Uh, North Front Street, listen, there've always been parts of North Front Street that have always been questionable. Um, but North Front Street, like any place else, has its good sections and its, uh, problem sections. And, you know, Ashley Boulevard, Bellevue Avenue, I mean, I'll tell you, Bellevue Avenue, since Riverside Park was put in, has seen a tremendous, uh, change. I mean, can it be better? Of course. Um, but I would like to see, you know, teenagers again, like I was, um, getting into mom's car or dad's car and driving up and down a Kushner Avenue. But again, you know, that's also a safety factor too. I I I have hope that, uh, things will be better and get better, um, like anything else. So again, we need to come together as a community and work together to see what we can do to to fix the 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 crime in our ward.
Okay, so back to, uh, Edwin. So businesses on the avenue. So the avenue has, is the one of the longest streets with the most amount of businesses in the city. So as you go down it and talk to some of the business owners, you find them saying they're struggling. They do point to crime, but they also point to a lot of the effort going to downtown instead of the avenue. Um, talked to Adriana's, she sent me an email talking about how, you know, she's on Tomlin and Kushner Avenue, having problems getting people in there sometimes because of the crime at night. Um, what is a solution to bring business back to Kushner Avenue? Keep people there, not going out of business?
I think it it all ties into that establishing that connection with people. We have to be willing to leave the office and get to know people by name and not just for the moment, and be actually present when you speak to people and help them move forward and beyond the struggle that they're in. Clearly, people are struggling. Not only businesses, but people. And so because people are struggling, obviously, the businesses are gonna struggle. And the crime rate's gonna go up. And this is, this is obviously beyond anything we can do realistically. Um, but there's hope, and we could just do our part at meeting with people and building these relationships that help people move on and live beyond their geographic location, live beyond their socioeconomic, uh, problems and difficulties, and live beyond their adversity that they're facing. And that's, that's just the reality of it. Everything stems from all this, all these, uh, the drug-related issues. Is is and fatherlessness is an issue. All that stuff is going on right now, and we just need to be aware of the problem and actually go out there and try to meet people. We can't just be sitting in an office all day. And that's what I feel like I'm gonna bring to the table.
So how do we improve business in Ward Two?
Well, you know, many of the businesses in, uh, along Kushner Avenue have been there for a while, and they've seen a change, and they're they're hanging on. Yeah, a lot of them are having problems with break-ins, robberies. And I think one of the things that I would like to do is try to get as many grants as we can from our government, not only local but federal. You know, approach, um, Department of Housing and Urban Development to see if there's any money there that we can get. Uh, I wanna work with the mayor and and, uh, other community leaders and businesses to see, you know, the facade, the cleanup of, I know that that one time there was money for that, and I believe there still is, but not enough. Uh, we need to have, uh, again, the police officers, uh, walking, the the Walk and Talk Program is very, very important. We need, you know, Kushner Avenue has, uh, contributed economically to the city since day one. And we need to bring that back. But retail has been hurting for years. You know, people shop online now. So we need to come up with better incentives for people to want to come out. And I think we we can, as a community, especially along a Kushner Avenue. Uh, I know that there's talk about putting banners outside to attract uh, uh, people to come in to both the restaurants and the retails and, uh, along the street. Let's clean the sidewalks. Let's clean, uh, the streets. Let's make it easier for people to park and have a reason to wanna come to a Kushner Avenue. So I'm, I wanna work directly with the business owners and see what we can do, what we can come up with. There's a lot of money out there. I know that some people say, oh, the government doesn't have any money. No, there is money, and there's a lot of grant money that we can go after. And I will do my best to see what we can. Working with groups like the C E D C that are located on Kushner Avenue, they do tremendous work there. And, uh, we wanna do more with them. I wanna do more with them. Uh, let's get a bank. I mean, think of it, below Nash Road, Nash Road to Cogswell Street, there's no bank there. So how can the business owners in the community do their business um, without having that in their community? And that's something that I wanna work on.
Carlos.
Um, I agree. I also, uh, for a while now, I've been speaking about, uh, I believe Antonio Cabral, years ago, brought some money for the facades, and and some of the buildings had some rehab, I believe it was the Band Club and, uh, is it Tealiers or, I don't know, a couple of restaurants on a Kushner Avenue. And I think that's a tremendous, uh, good idea. Uh, get some grant money to to fix up the facade, so we can get, uh, not just help the businesses that are there now, but attract new businesses. Um, the the people in Ward Two, especially homeowners, I know a lot of people go after the landlords, and they're talking about landlord this, landlord that. What the landlords wanna see, they don't wanna see these, uh, these people that are loitering on the corners, doing, uh, uh, drugs and committing crimes. They don't want them coddled. They don't want them, uh, ha- uh, uh, you know, catered to. They want these people moved along. They want them out of the neighborhoods. The neighborhood is fed up. We're tired. I know that nonprofit groups, they need customers, and they'll go to any extent to keep that line going. I don't think that's what New Bedford needs. We don't need that. We already have, I know Edwin believes, uh, he's the only nonprofit in the city, but there are dozens in New Bedford. Dozens.
Edwin, you have one minute.
Yeah, I mean, again, people. I'm not, I'm not a politician, you know, like what you see here. I'm giving you raw and real answers here. That's what you're getting from me. That's what you're gonna get. I'm not gonna change just for the sake of a campaign. And I will continue on the work that we've been, we've been doing for the past few years, long after this election is over.
Okay, so next question with, uh, start with Maria. So a big thing in in across the country and obviously in New Bedford is the opioid epidemic. Is there a, are we making headway? Is there a solution? What are some of the things you would bring to the city to to stem the flow?
Well, it's unfortunate that so many families have to deal with addiction. I think everyone in either drug or alcohol addictions. I have, um, I I really truly believe that there are, yes, there are many great programs out there, but I also think the programs are not enough. I think they need to be a little bit longer, three or six months. Um, I I I believe is not enough time. You also have to understand because the addict, whoever he or she is, needs to want to be helped. And no matter what kind of programs they get involved with, if they don't wanna do it, a lot of it is court-appointed, and guess what? So they go into a program, they do the program, three months, six months later, they're out. And they're back to doing exactly what they did before. So I think that we need to, I I would love to go after the drug dealers. Um, these are people that are on our streets selling these drugs. Many people have great ideas of what we should and shouldn't do. The other thing I'd like to see is, listen, the reality is, and I don't wanna just go after doctors. It's not just the doctors, but there have been a lot of prescriptions written to young adults. Why are you giving an, uh, a seventeen- or eighteen-year-old oxycodone? Um, that's an easy drug to get addicted to. We need better education. We need, uh, better awareness of what these drugs can do to our bodies and our families. So I'd like to see more interaction with, uh, the treatment centers where there is more, um, longer programs. People, I've I've had friends who have lost children, and no parent should ever lose a child to an addiction. So let's create a treatment center for longer than three or six, uh, um, months. We need years of, um, treatment.
Carlos.
Um, I'm well, very well aware of the, uh, the opiate, uh, epidemic. I buried my friend not too long ago, Michael, Mikey. His nickname was Cheese Curl, uh, Mike Mellow. And unfortunately, Mellow, and unfortunately, he passed away, uh, from, uh, from opiates. And, and, and I think it's, uh, I definitely, uh, do believe we have to go after the, uh, the drug dealers that prey on the young, prey on the weak, um, the ones that make excuses, the ones that, uh, are terrorizing our neighborhoods. But this is a two-fold, uh, situation. Uh, it's not, it's not just the people that are addicted, but also the families and the citizens in New Bedford. What we don't wanna see and what people are tired of are parks littered with needles, overdoses happening in public spaces, and I wanna tell you right now, I will not support safe zones for heroin injection like my opponent. I absolutely think that's not what we need, that's promoting and showing acceptance for a behavior that we should never tolerate and we should not accept. Yes, we must always help the people that need help, but let's do it in a way where it doesn't hurt the taxpayers of the city.
Okay, so I don't know who opponent you're talking to, who you're referring to. Okay, so you both get one minute to counter that.
He knows it's, it's, uh...
Why don't you just say it?
'Cause it's obvious.
It's not obvious.
Okay, you both get one minute, so you go, you're counting for us and then you get the answer.
Knock can potty guy?
What is that?
The knock can potties?
Knock can potty? I'd like to know where you get your information, right? Do you just like to listen to yourself talk?
Well, I asked you personally and you said you had involvement in bringing a safe zone into, into New Bedford.
No, that's incorrect.
Oh, so that was incorrect?
I'm actually against safe zones.
Oh, you're against safe zones?
I'm for helping people. I never said that, I was for safe zones.
So, what do you, so it's not a safe zone, what do you call it?
You're talking about, why don't you...
Okay, let's, let's move on, so I'm asking the questions, you go ahead and, you get a minute and you get two minutes, Maria, since they were talking on this. So, go ahead, you got a minute to counter what Carlos said and you also get time to go, go over the question.
What he just said?
Yeah, if you wanna counter it, please don't interrupt Carlos, you get one minute.
Yeah, um, he's a child, so it's hard to tame himself. Um, yeah, no, I mean, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not for safe zones. Uh, I don't know if he fully understands what a safe zone is, it's, uh, clearly a place where people can come in and be supervised to use drugs and I'm, I'm definitely not for that and everybody knows that. Um, is that good?
And now you can address the question, which is, how do we, um, solve the opioid crisis in New Bedford?
Well, unlike my opponents who have, uh, lacked, uh, compassion and, uh, you know, sensitivity to this issue by addressing, you know, people who are struggling with addictions, uh, as drug addicts, I think it's very insensitive and, uh, I think that, you know, my opponent should reconsider that terminology first and foremost. I think that we need to, i- if, uh, on talk about education and awareness, unlike my opponents, um, I'm part of the Green New Bedford Opioid Task Force and we've been working at this for a year now, you know, in collaboration with doctors, in collaboration with the community health centers, the health department, I mean, there's over twenty-something organizations that are part of this thing and we're all working to holistically attack this issue that's challenging our community and, and, and breaking families apart and that's the reality. And we need to meet these people where they're at like we've been doing. This is the work that's going on as we speak, you know? They're not talking about it because they're not up to date with what's really going on. There is work that's being done, there's always, there's never enough, but we're doing everything that we can to make sure that no more lives are taken to this addiction problem. Another major issue that hasn't been discussed yet is the sober homes. We need to find a way to regulate these homes, they're unregulated and I've, I've actually lost a friend because of these sober homes, quote-unquote, that, uh, that are supposedly safe places for people in their recovery and all they're doing is causing people to relapse and in some cases even die. And I think that that's something I'm gonna keep highlighting, I'm gonna keep fighting for because I've personally had families that have been affected by this and I don't want, I no longer wanna see that happen to anybody.
Carlos, you have one minute, it'll come to you.
Okay, I know sometimes, uh, people get a little carried away and they believe they know me, uh, because they see me live on New Bedford Live or they, they, they tend to think they know me. But if he knew me, he would, he would know that I've saved over twelve people's lives overdosing. I don't go patting myself on the back about that. I don't go around promoting knock can because I don't think that's the answer.
You just did, you said you saved twelve lives, how'd you do it? With knock can or with your finger? What'd you do?
But listen, I'm not promoting it, that's your job.
You are promoting it, saving lives.
You promote it, that's what you do.
It's saving lives.
All you do...
You just said it yourself.
Listen.
Right?
You started off selling heroin and you just won't let go of it, okay?
I won't let go of it?
You won't let go of it. What's the hope dealers thing about?
The hope dealer?
That sounds a lot like a dope dealer to me.
Oh, excuse me.
You won't let go of the street, you just won't do it.
I won't let go of the street.
Okay, let's move, let's move...
No, no, I'm, I'm gonna finish this.
You got fifteen seconds.
You think you know me and you're saying these things and you know absolutely nothing about me.
And you think you know me, you don't know me.
Okay, so, Maria, you have two minutes to talk about whatever you wanna about.
Well, first of all, unfortunately, I think most families in one way or the other have been affected by addiction. To say that I don't know what it's like is untrue. Uh, I'm not gonna expose someone that I love very, very much, but my family has dealt with addictions and I've seen firsthand what it can do and it's not pretty and it's not easy, but there's always hope and I don't think any one of us here, uh, has all the answers. I have worked very closely with addiction since the time I was eighteen years old. Warren Davis, some of you won't know that name, was a gentleman who started one of the first DUI programs in New Bedford and also dealt, dealt with the methadone clinic. I was eighteen years old when I went to go work there and I've seen the good and the bad of what can happen to someone and what it can affect and how it can affect a family. I saw a loved one incarcerated at the Taunton Hospital Mental Institution because that's what they did with, uh, addiction. Um, so, let's stop the name-calling of, let's stop with, uh, I know better than you. I am here because I'm running for Ward Two Counselor and I know that I have the experience and the temperament to do so. We need to come together as a community, we need to come together as a ward and I respect both gentlemen here for what you've done or not done, but let's stop with the childishness and the name-calling and let's stick to the issues. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna do the final two parts of this, I'm gonna ask one last question and you each get, um, up to three minutes, so you can say whatever you want in your last three minutes, okay? So, who did I start with?
With the first question?
All right, sorry, with you, right? Okay, so we're gonna start with Carlos. Can you say something good about each of your opponents?
Uh, can I say something good about each of my opponents?
Be nice, Carlos.
Well, I like the fact, uh, that they, they ran for office, I, I think that's, uh, a good thing. Uh, it takes a, it takes a little bit to run, it's not easy, so...
Give me something specific about Edwin and then give me something specific about Maria that you, you can respect about each of them.
Well, it's tough in this situation, obviously, what we, we've been, what people can understand is behind the scenes, there's been a lot going on, so to, to, to sit here and, uh, you know, it, it's difficult at this time to find something positive about Edwin, but I will. I think the fact that, uh, he's run for office, uh, he takes care of his children, uh, he, you know, stuff like that, I appreciate that. And, uh, Maria, I, I appreciate the fact that you're close to your mom and you took care of all her needs during her time of need, I appreciate that.
Okay, Edwin, you say something good about each of your opponents.
Um, regards to Maria, I think that it's, uh, very noble, you know, that you really stopped everything and considered your mom and, and made that a priority. Um, I would, I would do the same thing for my mom, so, uh, when it comes to that, I think that that's very special and, uh, I think that's very admirable. Um, Carlos, uh, I think that, um, I think your intentions are well, you know, and I, 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 I do appreciate some of the work that you do, uh, regardless of how you do it, sometimes it gets a little out of hand, but, um, I really think that your intentions are well, you mean well with what you do, um, and I think that that's what I appreciate about you.
Okay, Maria?
Well, Carlos, I've always, even though he may not believe this, I have respected some of the work that you have done and I do respect you as a dad. You see how close you are with your son and that is, in today's world especially, to see a father and son as close as you are with yours, I respect that. Uh, Edwin, I respect you for what you've been able to overcome in your life, you know, uh, you've faced adversity and I respect you for that. You seem to be a great husband and a father and, uh, you do some amazing stuff in the community, uh, just like all of us and, um, I wish you well and, um, and that's, you know, listen, I think we're all great people, that, that's what I wanna say, is I think we are, we love our families, we love our community and, uh, we may disagree on how to bring about the issues, but I think overall, um, you know, let's, let's try to work together and be nice to each other.
Okay, so closing statements, we're gonna start with Edwin, you got three minutes.
Um, I just, I decided to run for Ward Two, uh, because I felt that, you know, people have told me that I can make, I, I can continue to make a difference and I understood that Ward Two Counselor means someone who's actually gonna be there with people and I feel like I've been in the position of a counselor, not writing legislature ordinances or anything like that, but in regards to public service, I've been doing that for several years now as a volunteer, not paid, anything like that. I will continue to do it long after this election's over. If I am afforded the opportunity to be a counselor, fine, if not, I will, uh, work with whoever's here, uh, because it's part of the work that we do, we have to work with our counselors to get street closings and all that stuff, uh, just to serve the people. That's what it's about, this is about the people. If we, I believe that we need to connect with people, meet them where they're at to help them and start that transformation that comes from within and help them be a productive citizen, which will change and impact their family, their neighborhood, and eventually the city as a whole. So, I believe there's hope and, uh, I hope that you guys give me an opportunity to, to, to show that in the city council chambers.
Maria?
Well, first, again, I wanna thank New Bedford Guide for hosting this for us, so thank you, and I wanna thank the two gentlemen here. Um, it's been a very feisty debate and that's always nice. I have worked my whole life in public service and that's what I do and that's what I wanna do for Ward Two. We have some amazing people who live in our ward and they're looking for someone who not only will listen to them, but will bring action, um, to this wonderful place, um, from Cogswell Street, Sawyer Street, North Front Street, Bellevue Avenue, Ashley Boulevard to Krishnath Avenue. I grew up, as you all know, in that ward. I wanna be able to do what I've done for the last thirty years and that is to help the people. Um, I was lucky enough to work on many of the issues that affect the city. Uh, I worked for two great men, some people may disagree on what they did for the city and I was lucky enough to bring my experience to them and to the city. I've never forgotten where I came from, I've never forgotten the people that have helped me through my life. I am here to help people as much as I can. I will always be accessible, you can always call me, I will always listen to you, um, we may not always agree on the same issues or how to go and fix the issues, I'm willing to work with the mayor and with the city council and our representatives both in the state house and also in Congress. So, I bring a voice that I think has been needed for a very long time. So, again, thank you to the people of Ward Two and hopefully you will vote for me on October third.
Carlos?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Carlos Felix. I believe you guys have come to know me by now for some of the work I've done in the city. Some of you agree with me, some of you disagree. I've been called an activist for decades, a name given to me by the Standard Times. I do not consider myself an activist, I am active in my community. My, in my effort is to bring back Ward Two for the hard-working families. I've already been active doing things like counselors are responsible for. Citizens Input Time was brought back to the city council because of my actions. Because of my actions, Seven-Eleven is now cleaning up their property, training new people, closing down from twelve to five. I got the city to clean up the parks, replace mulch, fix lighting, replace garbage, I've gotten the chief to send people into areas of crime when councils have failed in the past. I will work hard for you, ladies and gentlemen. I am who I am, this is the real Carlos. You know who I am, I will not let you down. I will make New Bedford, Ward, I mean, Ward Two, New Bedford, a safe place again because I don't have an agenda. I don't have a conflict of interest like my opponent, ladies and gentlemen. Have a good night and please consider voting for Carlos Felix, I appreciate it.
Okay, so that ends the debate, but I wanna remind everyone, October third, seven AM to eight PM you can vote. People don't know is you can also vote on Saturday, so absentee, you can't make it on that Tuesday. We're gonna have Manny DeBrito on here, he's the head of the Election Commission, on Thursday at seven o'clock, um, on our show with, uh, Chris Rizendi, so he's gonna be on here for fifteen minutes taking your questions. City of New Bedford has issues with getting a low turnout, let's make it a better turnout this, uh, this Tuesday. If you don't vote, don't complain on social media, we don't wanna, we wanna see out there voting, okay? So, thank you to the candidates and we'll see you on Thursday.
Thank you.